So Mark, you can get up and walk around if you'd like to a little bit. You're welcome. Not that you don't do enough Mark walking, two steps a day, right? [INAUDIBLE] Discuss, but just so you'll know, we cannot discuss anything that's either on our agenda tonight, or anything that the city may or may not be in a matter of litigation now or in the future. Any judicial, quasi judicial land use matters such as a zone change, or if we know there's a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future time, we'll notify you and you will not be able to speak on that. So, that said, would you go ahead and if you would like to speak, introduce yourself and you need to sign both the paper and state your name for the record, please.
My name is Wesley Edwards, and I live at 1056 Southeast First Street. And I'm here this evening on behalf of a newly formed neighborhood association, the South Downtown Region. And I'll pass out some information that clarifies exactly what we've set as our boundaries and so on.
Okay, that'd be great.
But essentially, it's everything from the south end of Second Street down to Cozine Creek, over here to 99, and over towards Joe Dancer. And essentially, we have about 45 members thus far. And over the past few months, we've spent some time adopting some bylaws and creating a kind of formal structure, and finding out from our membership what specific areas or issues were of interest for them. And I've been asked here this evening, on behalf of them, as the newly elected president, to introduce our board and our association, in the hopes that, you know, we can work with you and with the city as a whole to help improve McMinnville. So the board itself is, my name's Wesley Edwards, I'm the president. Joseph Navari is the vice president. Pamela Stevens is our secretary. Will Hamilton is our treasurer. Dawn Edwards is actually here this evening, she's the director. And Ellie Gunn is also a director, she's here as well. And JW Milligan as well, is a member of the board. And ultimately, we want to work to help beautify and improve our section of McMinnville, and have a more active and participatory group of neighbors, both to help and work with each other, and then to make it more efficient and more useful for our members, to be able to stay informed on what's happening with the city and their particular neighborhood in general, and then hopefully for yourself and for the city, rather than having each of us come to you individually, asking questions and trying to gather information, it could make it more efficient and useful for us to work together. And so, I'd like to give these flyers. And most of the questions should be answered on the papers. And I've included in there an email address, the website that we've created as well, all of the bylaws and information that we've put together is on there. And in particular, we'd like to request that the planning and city development be instructed to provide us with any notifications that might be of use to the people in our area, so that we can stay better informed and participate better with you and with the city.
Okay, let me ask, and I want to ask staff questions. Mike might, but Martha, you probably might know the answer to this, and Doug might know the answers. Any official land use issues, there's a certain notification area, Doug?
Yeah, when it comes to land use planning, notification takes on its own complexity. In fact, the legislators have crafted specific language in statute to deal with this very issue, and it's codified in RS 197763. And when we do get a quasi judicial application, we provide notice to the applicant, those that have property within the notification area, and to any community organization or neighborhood association that the governing body has recognized. I would underscore the word "recognized." To my knowledge, this council has not recognized this or any other area committee in the city. For that reason, we have not, we've been requested and have not provided notice to this group.
Doug, what would, oh, Martha, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up with what Doug is talking about on, for instance, if you have, when we had the Gospel Rescue Mission, the, within 500 feet of that rescue mission is who we will notify. On the rest of the meetings, we already do the public notice for any meeting that we have in an advisory committee, so that's already out there. So, if we can make that available to you, direct you to our websites, anything, we'd love to have you there. I think between, we get the planning commissions' notice, you come to our urban renewal meetings, that would be great. You know, we do everything from our affordable housing advisory task force, that's out there already. So, make available, look at our website, make that one of your tools. And then, for public notice, that's generally how we do it, newspaper. If you find that, if there's some other public venue out there that we can make that's easier for you to get, be tickled pink to investigate that, but start with our website, it's already there.
Let me, let me ask a question of, Doug, you've been here a long time, I know, we used to have unofficial neighborhood, like watch areas through the police department, stuff like that. Is there anything in statute, or what it would take from an administrative standpoint? Because I think if this is successful, if this group is successful, this may be something that's taken to the other areas of town. For the council, what are the requirements if the council were to study and officially rec, and what do they mean by officially recognize? I guess that's what gets me, what do they mean by officially recognize this group? What are the requirements to be officially recognized?
I don't know if there's any specific scripted method by which you can do that, but it certainly speaks to goal one, which is citizen involvement. And in that context, we have a citizen advisory committee that serves that role as well as our planning commission. A community can, on its own volition, create the rules and process for recognizing area committees, and those can serve to advise on issues within a neighborhood. I know the city of Salem has that kind of structure, and at least two other organizations. I worked prior to coming here, we had that type of an organization as well, to provide for public input, primarily on quasi judicial applications, but on occasion legislative issues as well. Again, the city of McMinnville has not adopted that as a process to date.
Okay, let me direct something to the council, question to the council. If we see something like this coming into the future, we think this is a good idea, would the council like to investigate, Doug said some of the other jurisdictions he was with, what it takes or how we would, because I mean, we're not going to send it out to everybody in that neighborhood, we may only send it out to the president or the vice president or something, and then make them ensure that the word gets out to their group? But I'd like to know how the council feels about that, Scott?
Well, the first thing, and Martha I think addressed that, and that is on our website. And we are just about ready to launch that new website, that I think is going to be much more user friendly, and there'll be a dropdown for community meetings, and I think it's going to be a much better way for our citizens to follow what's going on. Right now, you know, you can get lost a little bit, and we understand that, and that's why we're putting so much time and effort into this new website that's going to be user friendly, and it'll go boom boom, and you, we think that you don't have to click more than two times and you'll be to where you want to be. And we're very close to that, and Scott's over here, and we're getting pretty close, aren't we, Scott?
Yeah, I would say, in April, we'll be seeing that, and definitely looking at neighborhoods, that's the kind of information we love to get out on there, so.
And then the other thing I would say, let's take for instance, this group, we have some major stuff happening on Fifth Street, Alpine, and that's a part of our urban renewal advisory committee. I can tell you right now, first Wednesday of each month, four o'clock at the community development office, we have our advisory committee. Now, we have those that have been invited to sit around the table, but it's an open meeting, and others can come and sit around the table and listen to what's going on with this group. And I'll keep you very informed on the enhancement of what's going to happen between Adams and Baker and Lafayette, what's going to be happening on Alpine, what's going to be happening on Third Street, and what's going to be happening on Second Street, as we're using some of the transportation money, and some of our urban renewal monies. And I think that's something that, you know, finding someone on that committee that represents your board to drop in on that, you're going to get a whole sense of what's going to be happening at the south end of your group, or that, and know that that's an ongoing meeting. And from time to time, we do cancel if we don't have anything on the agenda, but we've been pretty actively moving forward with that, so.
Okay, thanks, Remi.
I look forward to seeing the bylaws, mission bylaws. I'd love to know how you came up with the boundaries for this. So, I think at this point, I clearly appreciate involvement in your city and forming an association to solve problems that you see arise. And I don't know, at this point, with just this small amount of information, what more to do yet, but I look forward to more information coming from you as well. And I can hear the, that clearly there's some dissatisfaction with not, without, with not receiving notification, but I don't feel like I have enough information from either, from either perspective at this point to really comment on it, other than know that the city's staff and council wants to work with citizens that are wanting to work with us.
I think, Remi, one thing, as far as your question, the boundaries, to me, of course, I've been here a long, oh, you've been here a long time, all your life too. It's pretty, pretty easy if I look at the boundaries, it's the Cozine Creek and Second Street and Three Mile Lane, I mean, and if it really makes sense because of the green area, it's a pretty, really good drawn boundary line, I mean, it really does put that area into an area of its own. I guess Scott made a good comment to me, I guess maybe my only addition to Scott's comment would be that, in order to know that there's something going on in your particular neighborhood, and I'm thinking the bigger picture, if we have four or five of these around the city, and it's more of a future vision type thing, in order to know what's going on in your neighborhood, you'd have to go to the website and you'd have to look. To me, that makes it, the city's not being proactive, they're being reactive. I would like to see something done, and that's why I asked the question about how you recognize these areas and what Doug's information, because personally, I'd like to see the city be more proactive than reactive, so. But I mean, that's just my question. Alan?
Well, I may have something for you on that as well.
Okay.
When we launch the new website, you'll have the opportunity to sign up for emails on every various commission that you're interested on. And by the way, we publicly, also on these meetings, we public notice them as well. So, that's, that's the official way for governments to put a notice out there, is public notice. We'll go beyond that by allowing you to sign up for email notification direct.
I think that's a good thing, because if you, if we can do that push technology, and you can subscribe to emails, I think then that's a very good answer, because then you'll automatically get them.
Yeah, the website itself and the overhaul that's coming there sounds phenomenal, and in terms of the advisory committee and anything else of a public nature that we can have a representative to and gather information on, we absolutely intend to do. And to answer kind of your inferred question on the boundaries itself, as we began to just kind of call neighbors together and get to know each other and do nature walks and, you know, kind of the normal neighborly things that people do, and this kind of started coming together, all the people that were interested in being involved and coming together were all within that boundary. So, that's, A, the first part of how it was kind of self-selected, and then secondarily, there's kind of natural boundaries, as the mayor laid out so well. And then ultimately, for us, there isn't any frustration on our end in terms of getting notified yet, as we just kind of started this. So the idea was just to kind of see what the best lines of communication would be for us to work with, that we're already there and in place. And as we kind of started with the discussion, and talking about the planning department, my understanding is there were already notifications going out, and there's a provision in place that if there is a group such as ours, in a neighborhood board and that kind of thing, if it were officially recognized, there's already notifications being sent. And so, it would seem to me that, at least initially, that that kind of communication line is already in place and was there for us to use. So I guess my primary question or consideration then would be what specific format is necessary in order for somebody to be recognized?
Well, that's why I asked the council for their input, and I asked Doug for his input, because what I don't want to do is go off and put something in place that would kind of pertain to this area. I mean, I think that this is something that, to me anyway, as mayor, the council has to give more thought about, because I do think we're going to see more of these probably, based on the success you guys have. We're probably going to see more, when citizens find out this is happening, we're probably going to see more of these, up around the city. So I want some good guidance and something that says, without somebody coming back to the council all the time, that here's how we go about if somebody wants to be officially notified, this is how we go about it, this is what the, this is what the recognition would look like. And I don't want to take them, I want to take this citywide, and I don't want to do it for just one group. So I'd rather the council myself and staff put more thought, and I think Doug has thoughts, because he said he's seen it in different places. I'd like to see it looked at so when we, if we do implement something on recognizing a group, neighborhood group, it applies to every group that's formed in the city, and not just this specific group. And I think that takes a little bit more consideration, but I think with what you've heard tonight, between the push emails and the notification and the public hearings, because I can't think of anything that would go on in this area where somebody who's a member of this would not receive a notification. I mean, if it's within that distance, somebody, and then I would think I would leave it up to the organization, that person or that resident in that org for now, the resident person in that org that's in that area, to make sure everybody else gets notified.
Absolutely, and we had set up a provision within our bylaws, which was that we would have someone responsible at all times for communication. And so there would be one person at this point, that's Ellie Gunn, who would receive all the information on our info email address, and then that one individual would push that out to whatever interested or concerned parties there was, so.
Yeah, good, Wes, because I think and I'd want, of course, our attorney to weigh in on this too, to make sure, because I can see four or five of these, but I don't want a four block area come to us and say, we want to be notified, we want to be recognized now as this group, where we get 15 or 20 of these groups, because they're just a little group of their own. So I think from a guidance standpoint, there's some, some really good responsibility the council and the city looks like, before we recognize somebody, what we would expect, like if you guys have bylaws, you're a formally formed group, and those kind of things, then you might be able to be recognized, but if somebody comes and said, we're these neighbors in this part, we want to be recognized, you know, so.
Mayor, is this kind of a quasi judicial land use matter?
I don't think itself it is.
I mean, I don't know.
Could I make a suggestion, we're far past our two minutes.
It seems far past.
We're far past our two minutes. If they want to come back, please, let's work with me to get on the presentation schedule. But let's push this and move on, that would be my suggestion, and we'll work with them to get them back on the schedule.
I want them to come back to the council and work with all of us to get this back on the council, so.
Thanks so much.
So anyway, Wes, we'll work on it, but thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Let's move on to the minutes of the December, oh, one more. Mark, I thought you were just sitting back there before the heck of it. I thought we were going to be able to go a meeting without hearing from you. Mark Davis, go ahead, sign in.
Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington. I mean, I wasn't planning to say anything, but there's a couple of things on my mind, and so I'll just go ahead and say, I think that last discussion was overblown, I think that's fine. Really, all they were asking for was a simple notification, it's just let people know, I understand in the bigger picture, you need to come up with some rules now, whatever, but, you know, please go ahead and do that. I think that's the kind of thing that gives government a bad name, when all they're asking for is you to send one email to one person, I mean, you're not asking to notify the whole neighborhood. And maybe the new, you know, website will hold off, I mean, I'm already getting notifications of these meetings, but I don't think there's any way that I know of now that you get notified of planning commission meetings. So if that's built into the new website, then maybe it's going to take care of itself.
Yeah, I'll apologize for that, Mark, I probably let this go a little bit farther, because thinking that it probably, it needs to be covered, because the whole subject is a regular agenda.
Yeah, no, I understand the bigger picture thing, and go for it. But one other thing I just want to throw out there, because you spent a bunch of time talking about lights, I'd like you to consider light pollution when you're talking about lights, because there are a number of people who put lights up that, you know, affect other neighbors' properties, and some people don't like a real bright light shining into their bedroom. I found this out in one of the projects I was working on for the Housing Authority, when we stuck up a really nice light that we thought was a great light, and, you know, got the parking lot all lit up, and then suddenly the neighbors on both sides are going, what are you doing? You know, so, I wouldn't, and there are lights around this town, I don't want to go into details, but there's plenty of places where people are putting lights up that are, that benefit their property, but it's a detriment to the neighbor's property. So I think that at some point, you know, you might want to have some discussion about lumens and all that sort of stuff, and where the light's actually going. Thank you.
Using motion detectors to cut down on the use of the light, too.
Yeah. I know, you know, I never thought of it, Mark, do you see that? Because one of our neighbors has one up on the corner of their car, whenever somebody walks by, it's right into our bedroom window, so.
Yeah, I mean, there ought to be a rule about that.
It's a good point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anybody else? Hearing none? Oh, JW, you have exactly one minute. From all the last meetings, you have exactly one minute.
I don't remember my address. JW Milligan, Sixth, I'm on Second Street, all the neighborhood is asking for is a notice.
We've heard, we've heard that.
That's all we're looking for.
We've heard that.
And it's done in all cities all over the place. Thank you.
Thank you, JW. Okay, anything more? If not, let's go through considering minutes of the December 22nd, 2015, Joint City Council and Planning Commission Meeting, has anybody, everybody read their minutes?
Yep.
If so, I will entertain a motion to accept, so move, I have a second. Who down here seconding? Commissioner Rudin, or Councilor Rudin seconding, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? We have a proclamation, do we, Rose? Oh, thank you, David.
You're welcome, there you go. Official seal and everything.
Okay, there is nobody here to accept it, so I'm just going to read this proclamation. This is again for Arbor Week, which is April 3rd through 9th, 2016. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas the Arbor Day is now observed through the nation and world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderating temperatures, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our business area, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Richard L. Rick Olson, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim April 3rd through 9th, 2016, as Arbor Week in the city of McMinnville, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Week and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations, and witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed as 22nd day of March 2016. So are we going to get an Arbor Day flag or anything, Mike, or Doug?
We have a box full of Tree Arbor swag here for you to do rock, paper, scissors over, or however you choose to.
No, you know exactly how to handle those.
Well, I give the hat to the mayor every year.
The mayor doesn't need another Arbor Day hat.
Well, this will be the 19th year that this proclamation has been read.
19th year, wow.
In 1997, when we first received the award, I think there were 30 other cities, and there are now about twice that many in the state of Oregon that have received this award.
Okay, yep.
Kudos to David Renshaw and his group for doing the lion's work of the stuff when it comes to tree management, but also to the landscape review committee and our volunteer groups, they help us with that, as well as some people in our office.
Okay, thank you, Doug.
I'd take the hat if it's up for grabs.
Kevin wants the hat and he needs it with summer coming on.
That's not a joke, that's for real.
Well, we know it's for real.
Get this man a hat.
Give that man the Arbor, give the council president, since the mayor didn't want to, give the council president the Arbor Day hat.
Thank you.
Try it on.
And it goes through your throat.
My head thanks you.
There we go.
Very official.
Thanks, Doug.
And anybody else want, other than the flag, if there's any other goodies in there, you can fight over them?
Mayor?
Yes, Mike?
I think we'd be remiss in not recognizing Doug for the accomplishment of 19 years. Unless I'm mistaken, I doubt he'll come back for this proclamation next year, but his fingerprints are all over this program, and the reason we're a Tree City USA for 19 years in a row has a lot to do with Doug. He gave credit to his staff and to my staff, but I think we also need to give credit where it's due, and a lot of this has, is due to Doug. So, thank you, Doug.
Doug, when you retire, tell us what tree you don't like and where not to plant it, and we will plant that tree when you tell us not to, just so you can be frustrated. We'll plant a tree in your honor when you retire, Doug. Okay, that takes us to resolutions, Mike, very well put, thank you very much. Resolutions, we have one resolution, that's 2016-13, a resolution approving task order number one to the personal services contract for the design of the Oregon Route 99W at Second Street Signal Replacement Transportation Bond Measure Project. So, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, I refer you to your brief memo, as well as the materials that are in the packet that describe the scope of work that is covered by this task order. This is related to the Second Street Signals Upgrade Project. We've completed the Level One environmental work associated with that project, and that's led us to need to do a Level Two assessment on a portion of the project, primarily to define if and where, if there is contaminated soil, where it is, so that as we excavate for the project, we can tell the contractor limits of disposal and anticipated quantities. And so, I would recommend that you adopt the resolution authorizing this task order to Murray Smith and Associates in the amount of $15,698.
Okay, I've got one question, the report says that's...
Try it on, try it on.
My head thanks you.
There we go.
Very official.
Thanks, Doug.
And anybody else want other than the flag, if there's any other goodies in there, you can fight over them.
Mayor?
Yes, Michael.
I think we'd be remiss in, in not recognizing Doug for the accomplishment of 19 years, unless I'm mistaken, I doubt he'll come back for this proclamation next year, but his fingerprints are all over this program, and, and the reason we're a Tree City USA for 19 years in a row has a lot to do with Doug. He gave credit to his staff and to my staff, but I think we also need to give credit where it's due, and a lot of this has, is due to Doug. So, thank you, Doug.
Doug, Doug, when you retire, tell us what tree you don't like, and we're not to plant it, and we will plant that tree when you tell us not to, just so you can be frustrated. We'll plant a tree in your honor when you retire, Doug. Okay, that takes us to resolutions. Mike, very well put, thank you very much. Resolutions, we have one resolution, that's 2016-13, a resolution approving task order number one to the personal services contract for the design of the Oregon Route 99W at Second Street, signal replacement, transportation bond measure project. So, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I refer you to your brief memo, as well as the materials that are in the packet that describe the scope of work that is covered by this task order. This is related to the Second Street Signals Upgrade Project. We've completed the Level 1 environmental work associated with that project, and that's led us to need to do a Level 2 assessment on a portion of the project, primarily to define if and where, if there is contaminated soil, where it is, so that as we excavate for the project, we can tell the contractor limits of disposal and anticipated quantities. And so, I would recommend that you adopt the resolution authorizing this task order to Murray Smith and Associates in the amount of $15,698.
Okay, Michael, one question. The report said that's the northeast section where the kiosks, or is it northwest corner?
Um...
Northeast, where the kiosk is?
The, so, the resolution said...
No, I'm asking, which corner was that on?
Well, the Level 1 assessment determined that on the first federal property, there at one point...
The first, right, that's the one I thought, the first northwest corner.
Correct, and that's what the task order indicates, that there was a presence of auto service business on that property in the past, and so we need to do some additional evaluation to ensure that if we are going to encounter contaminated soil, what the contractor needs to do with it.
I wonder how deep they'll find that, so, because most of the service used to be done in the long driveway, driving down the basement underneath that building, so...
Well, primarily, our investigation will be where we have to put traffic signal poles, and those are quite, the footings are, for those are quite deep, and so the, the actual investigation will be quite deep to determine where the, where in the stratum there might be contaminated soils.
Okay, thank you, Michael. So, we have a recommendation by staff to approve resolution number 2016-13. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Council Drapkin, do I second?
Second.
Second by Council Rudin, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that resolution 2016-13 passed the council unanimously. Thank you very much, Michael, and keep up, keep up the good work on all those projects. We're going to go ahead and skip our advice and information items tonight, because we do have a, I think we're still having a short executive session.
That's correct.
So, at this time, I will ask those that are not eligible to stay for the executive session, to leave, please, and Dave, your media, as long as you understand the rule, you got to turn off the camera, can't be recorded, can't be broadcast, but as a member of the media, you can stay, but nothing, and, Dawn, you know the rules on executive session?
Marcia, can you, can you stick around?
I guess you don't get to go, sorry, Marcia.